If you could take roll call, please.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Jean, and President Brandau.
Here. All right. Now, we are going to start our morning with an invocation from Pastor Roy Lee of Calvary Worship Center. And so Pastor, if you could come up to the microphone, and then, once we're done praying, we're going to salute the flag. So if everybody would stand up, please.
Before we pray, just want to take a moment to say that we have -- Bethel Christian Center has been part of the community for 100 years as of January this year, and we want to assure you that we pray for you on a regular basis, not just today. Shall we pray? Gracious Lord, we give honor and praise for who you are and what you have done in our world. Today, we come to you with humble hearts, beseeching your presence and your help in all matters before this council today. We ask that your wisdom, your ways, your purposes be understood and implemented by these officials. Guide them in what they can do to govern and improve the life of our citizens, our welfare, for things beyond their control, the drought, the national economy, et cetera. We ask for your grace to superintend and grant help in all of those, but may we here in Fresno City benefit. We have prayed, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to...
And today, we have several ceremonial presentations, and the very first one is one that I'm sponsoring. It's -- the Moonster Youth Choir was here in Fresno and performed last night at Warner's Theater. It was wonderful. Councilman Capriolio and I attended that and had a great time, and so I'm going to ask for Victoria, the director of the Bach Choir, to meet me down front, and then we're going to give some proclamations to some kids that came and participated and joined their counterparts here in Fresno and did a great performance. So, Victoria, if you could join me up front. So, Victoria, last night was a lot of fun, and I understood, I think, three of the songs. Yeah, you had some songs in English and a lot of songs in German. There was a song in French. The song that I understood the most was "Happy," and you did that one twice, and that was great. It was a great evening. So, why don't you tell us a little bit more about the program and how it became established, and what's been taking place?
Two years ago, we went to Moonster. We took our choir here from Fresno, and we went over to Moonster, and we were hosted by these wonderful people there. And we stayed in their homes, and we sang together, and we had an incredible time together. And so, it was our turn to host them this week. And so, they have 53 that are here visiting us, and 45 of them are singers, or at least students. And so, we've been -- they've been going about learning about Fresno all week, and staying with us and singing together, and we're hoping to return to Moonster in a few years and continue this relationship.
Fantastic. And I heard the offer was made last night to come to Moonster. So, this is an ongoing effort between the two communities. We are sister cities with the city of Moonster in Germany, and I'm the representative from council. And council, I just have to say, that was my first sister-city activity, and it was wonderful. All week, a German delegation from Moonster's been in town, interacting with Fresno State and our different business leaders in the city, and beginning to establish a relationship. So, it's very wonderful to have everybody... If all of the choir could come up here, I've got a proclamation that I'm going to hand each one of you. I've got to try and do it real fast, so come on up, kids. Everybody, come on up front. We'll try and make this as fast as possible. Let me let you hold that, and if you guys can face that way, and all the way across The council president. Steve, it's me. They're going to sing "Happy for Us," right? Can you do anything a cappella?
Yes, yes.
Okay. They can't come all the way up to the front and not sing. Right, okay. But Clint, I'm not going to lead them if that's okay with you. What's that?
Yes.
No, that would destroy the whole activity. So, why don't you lead us in something? Can you do something a cappella? For the moment, unannounced, yes.
Yes. We can sing the German song which we sang last night at first. It's a romantic poem about the forest and the nature.
Yes, let's do that, Victoria. Thank you.
Du meine Lust und Wegen an dich gehoffen hat. Dort außen steht der Tod. Auf die Geschäft gerutscht hat. Auf einmal die Ohren. Oh, wie ein Gründer sein. Schade auf mein Mann die Ohren. Oh, wie ein Gründer sein.
Wow. That was fantastic. Okay, the next time, the next time you guys are in Fresno, I have a request when we go to the concert next time. It's for the German version of "99 Red Balloons," okay? So, I am going... Lindsay, where's Lindsay at? Okay, Lindsay, I'm going to call out their names if you could pass them out to them, okay? And actually, I'm going to let you hold that.
But that's the name of our lord mayor, but they are no relatives. But it's a fine boy. Gianlu, where are you? Sophia Haushild. Amuri is a half-French. He introduced us in singing "Kantik de Jean-Russin." Patricia Stiebel. And Marlene. Marlene. Sophie Westling. That's Leon Hilbig. Wow. Sylvia Fornhecke. Mrs. Fornhecke. One of our doctors. Thank you. Axel, her husband. Where is he? There. Oh. And Simon Beckschulte. Katharina Bannert. Leonard Lingenfelsa. Zimin Seok. He sang last night the hymn, but he's from South Korea. South Korea, yes. Fine boy, yes. Mathis. Cedric. Kevin, Marcel, sorry. Marcel, Kevin, and has he no name? He's half-Netherlands. Maike, Maike Grüter. Anastasia. She's from Ukraine. Yes. Anna-Lena. And Jan Weimeyer. Sorry, we have two Jans, that's a problem. Jonas Babetzky. Jonas. Benjamin Donath. Vince. Where's Vincent? Muriel. Okay. Jan Niklas Niehaus. The organ player from last night. Timo Fainhussen, our Netherlands boy. Gisa. Jan Sprengs, our two-meter boys, boy. Justus, oh, no, Jonathan Vollwas. Katrin. Laura. And our Dr. Klaus Rensing. Jörg von Wenserski, my colleague. Thank you. Anja Kryenborg. Patricia Joppich, my colleague. Where is she? That's me. I don't know, it's from the who's? Have we, have we not only Sophie Dicker? But... Could be. Yeah, 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 okay. Frank. Alexander, his father's from Glendale. Where is he? There. Leah. And Sophia Dicker. And Carolyn Klein. Caroline Klein.
Well, thank you. All right, well, I just would like to say again, it was wonderful to have you in Fresno. It was wonderful to have you, again, participating with our local choirs and interacting with our Fresnans and our American, your American counterparts, and we look forward to sending our Fresno choir also to Germany. Hopefully, next year, we'll keep our fingers crossed. It was fantastic. The guy that played the organ, is that his name?
Jan Niklas.
Jan?
Jan.
Jan, very good job. I want to say thank you to Sally Cagliari, who opened Warner's Theater and allowed Jan to play the big organ, and it was beautiful. I haven't seen that in over two decades, and it was fantastic to be there and see that in operation and see it to be played by a master. And, but we appreciate all of you. Thank you very much for coming to Fresno. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have time for a picture?
Yeah.
We're going to try and get one picture if we could kind of squeeze in, everybody, just like you were on stage, really tight. Okay. Yeah, keep coming. Yes. Yeah, one more. Yes, exactly.
Do you have enough time for a picture?
Yeah, perfect, 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 perfect. A couple more over here, maybe.
Ronja, Sophia, put on a show.
All right. All right, perfect. All right, thank you for coming to our city. Who's is in there?
Yours is in there. I'm...
I brought that up with me, sorry. Our next ceremonial presentation is from Councilmember Baines, and it's a proclamation of National Day on Writing. So, Councilman Baines. And is Cathy God... Okay, come on, come on up, Cathy. Well, good morning, everyone. Steve, you making the whole delegation stay here for our council meeting? No. Oh, no, okay, okay. They don't have to stay. Oh, they don't have to stay? Okay, good. Don't listen to him. You guys can leave whenever you want, because we might get really boring later. But anyhow, I wanted to welcome Dr. Cathy Godfrey, and really, just, are any of the other partners here? Did you... Okay, great. And you are with the San Joaquin Valley Writing Project? All right, so we are going to do the proclamation for the National Day on Writing. And so, it's funny that we do a proclamation for this. What year is the pro...
This is the third or fourth year we've done it. I've done it every time I've been here, as if I'm a good writer for some reason. But I'll tell you that we often take for granted the importance of the ability to
be able to write. And I know that all of us in this room write pretty well. We can read and write, but the fact that we can communicate through written language is one of the things that makes human beings pretty special. And so, the fact that we acknowledge the fact that we write, and we write well, and we communicate through writing, is a relatively important thing. And so, the National Counsel of Teachers of English actually are a partner in this as well. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Cathy, and maybe you can tell us why it's important that we write.
Usually, when I meet people and tell them that I'm an English teacher, I get one of two responses. The first one is, "Oh, that was my least favorite class." And the second one, and more common one, is, "Oh, I'd better watch my grammar around you." That wasn't funny?
Yes. I was thinking, I had, like, I was doing, I'm like, I better not make this thing.
Yeah. The National Day on Writing gives us the opportunity to think about writing, and I think Oliver Baines did a wonderful job of talking about its importance, that it's more than just grammar and punctuation, that writing is a mode of self-expression. It's a way to reflect on our lives. It's a way to explore our thinking, and it's a way to communicate. And so, the San Joaquin Valley Writing Project, the National Council of Teachers of English, and the National Writing Project is very, very grateful to the Fresno City Council and to Oliver Baines for continuing to support the importance of writing in our lives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so very much, Cathy. And now, we... Yes, round of applause. And now, we will have our clerk read the proclamation.
Whereas the National Council of Teachers of English, in conjunction with its many national and local partners, including the San Joaquin Valley Writing Project, celebrates the importance of writing through the designation of a National Day on Writing, which occurs this year on October 20th, 2014. And whereas the National Day on Writing celebrates the foundational place of writing in America's personal, professional, and civic lives, and emphasizes the importance of writing instruction and practice at every grade level and in every subject area, from preschool through postgraduate education. And whereas newly developing digital technologies expand the possibilities for composing in multiple media at a faster pace than ever before, the National Day on Writing honors the use of full range of media for composing, from traditional tools like print, audio, and video, to Web 2.0, tools like blogs, wikis, and podcasts. And whereas the San Joaquin Valley Writing Project encourages Valley residents to continue writing for different purposes, audience, and occasions throughout their lifetimes, the National Council of Teachers of English maintains a national gallery of writing, which contains examples of writing by individuals throughout the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearengen and the members of the Fresno City Council, strongly affirm the purpose of the National Day on Writing, encourage participation in the National Gallery of Writing, and do hereby declare October 20th, 2014 to be National Day of Writing in the city of Fresno.
All right, thank you very much. We are so very lucky. And I would just remind everyone that we wrote that proclamation. Okay? There we go. I think that was funny. All right. All right, our next ceremonial presentation is for Councilman Capriolio. It's a surprise proclamation. So, Councilman, what's up your sleeve? This has us worried.
Good morning, everyone. As a city council member, we do numerous ceremonies, but we had to do one special today, and it's a total surprise. So, when the person hears their name, I think you're going to be really, really supportive and stunned, and I know she will be. So, let me do a little introduction. I met this person about 20 years ago at the YMCA. We were working out together. I'll give you a clue, she is an attorney. And I didn't know at that time that our paths would cross some 20 years later here at City Hall. And I want to say this, you know, to be a lawyer is one thing. The ultimate compliment is to be a lawyer's lawyer, and she is a lawyer's lawyer. So, if Tay Yukamoto would come up here, please. Nice round of applause. And Doug Sloan, her boss, is here as well, so what do you think? Thank you. That's very appropriate. Thank you so much. I just, thank you very much. Just a couple of things. Tay has been with the city of Fresno for 17 years. She was admitted to the bar in 1988. This is the proclamation, so I'm going to do the highlights of it for us. And as I said, over 20 years in the legal community, so I really thank you for being my lawyer.
Thank you.
And she started here at the city of Fresno in 1997. During her prestigious tenure, Miss Yukamoto was and has served on numerous boards, commissions, drafted numerous ordinances, resolutions, legal opinions, and also has worked on matters involving elections, fees... Tell me when to stop. Fees related to Proposition 218, mitigation fee, the Brown Act, Public Records Act, conflict. I mean, she's the total, the total package, folks, I'm telling you. So, and she was appointed Assistant City Attorney in June of 2013. So, now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Mayor Ashley Swearengen and the Fresno City Council, members do hereby proclaim Friday, tomorrow, October 10th, to be Tay Yukamoto Day in the city of Fresno. Doug, did you want to say a few things?
Tay is leaving us to move to Sacramento to join somebody that used to be in the city attorney's office here in Fresno.
Only Mr. Lucky.
Yes. Tay has had the responsibility over most of her time here to work on ethics and fair political practices issues, trying to keep council members out of trouble. And that has not been easy, so the fact that we haven't had council members, at least recently, get into big trouble is largely Tay's responsibility here for the last few years. So, she's done a great job. We really don't want to see her go, but there's nothing we can do about it. Thank you, Tay.
Thank you, Tay.
Thank you. Another round of applause for her.
Right on.
Mr. President, point of order. Tay, Tay, Tay. City Attorney Sloan said he could take the rest of the day, of the week off.
Right on. All right, now, we're on to the approval of some city council minutes from the meeting on October 2nd of this year. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to the minutes for that meeting?
No changes.
Then, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Now, on to council member reports and comments. I don't see any councilmen that want to jump in today. Gentlemen? Wow, a quiet crowd today. All right, then, I am just going to, I am just going to reiterate what I just said with, in one sentence. I have found the Fresno Sister Cities program to be fantastic. There's a lady named Lisa Murray who heads that up in our community, and she's doing a wonderful job reaching out to communities all around our world to bring people together. Fantastic organization. On to the...
I confirm and confer with you and agree with you, and my one word is ditto.
Oh, ditto, nice. All right, we're on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
Yes. Item 2A, file ID 14361, is regarding downtown parking contract. It's being pulled by staff. Next, there's a special meeting at 11:00 to discuss two closed-session items. And if you don't have the final revised agenda, the 3:00 p.m. workshop, which was on the first agenda, has been moved to 10:23.
So, the 11:00 p.m. item has also been pulled, is that correct? Okay, so the 11:00 p.m. item and the 3:00 p.m. item and, and General Admin 2A, the parking? Okay. All right, with those changes...
Council President, the 10:30 a.m. item, I'd like to pull that and set it over for a couple of weeks. 10:30?
3:00 p.m. this poll.
Yes. Yes, it is my appeal.
If you have an older version, or you might not have the 11:00 a.m. item on there. Okay, so 10:30, 11:00, 3 o'clock, and General Admin Item 2A have all been pulled from this agenda. So, with those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Question, you know, I've got the final meeting, final revised. Okay, this does not have the 11:00 a.m. item on it?
Yes, we had... Yes, we had it on the original version, and that correction was to take it off and move it to the 23rd of October, which is listed on the back sheet for upcoming hearings.
Okay. Well, my point is, these are getting very confusing, too. They're changed, they're hard to follow. I mean, this is better than it was a month ago, but it's still finding things and all these changes would be easier. And I realize certain things develop if we could get it all by Friday. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Council President, I would agree with Council Member Lee Brand's comments. It's very confusing, and I don't have the 11:00 o'clock on mine, so I don't know what we can do about that, but there's room for improvement.
That's all the fault of the Council President. So with those changes, do we have a motion to accept today's agenda?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Now we are on to the consent calendar. Councilmen, are there any items on the consent calendar that you prefer to pull for discussion or continue today? All right, then. I'm going to open up to members of the public. If there's any members of the public that would like to comment on any of the items on the consent calendar.
Would that be later?
No, you can still do that. Yeah. We'll get right back to you. Any members of the public on today's consent calendar? All right, then. Councilman Quintero, you had wanted an item on consent.
Yes, I wanted to pull Item 1E, which is the towing operators, towing operation franchise.
All right. With 1E being pulled for discussion, then the rest of the consent calendar is to be voted on. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Councilman Quintero, we are on now to the contested section, which was the item you just polled, 1E, and so the floor is yours.
Okay. Is there anybody here from staff or the towing operator folks? Okay, that's better.
Sergeant Anthony DeWol.
Okay. On the, in putting the Reso and Nornans together, were you able to meet with the, with the owner operators in terms of the process and how it was going to be drawn up and everything?
Yes, we met with them regarding the contract, and we have tentative unanimous approval from all the operators on the, on the towing list, that they do agree with the, the contract, and they would have no problem signing it.
Okay. What about the ones that weren't on the towing list that want to get on the towing list?
I don't believe we've met with them. No.
Will you be meeting with them, or, or this is the final, final that you would like approved?
This is the final, final. We actually have more tow companies on our list than the ordinance allows because of, because when this ordinance was adopted, or when the municipal code was adopted, we had more companies, and through attrition, we've been able to decrease the amount of tow companies we've had on the list, but we're still about five over what we should have.
How many do you have on the list currently?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? How many would you estimate are towing companies around Fresno that would be eligible?
That would want to be on the list? I'd have to, what do you think? Fifteen? Fifteen more? So it sounds like we have about 15 more that, that would like to be on the list.
So if you have to kick one out for whatever reason, the next one, you, you have them each, and you just draw one out of a bag, or you, you have a, you have them in sequence or whatever?
So it's by seniority, whoever puts in first?
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. That's what I needed. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'd been getting some talks over the past year and calls from some of the towing operators in terms of some of the concerns they had, so I just want to be able to get back to them and let them know that, that the process was on the up and up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve.
Move to approve. And I'll second that. So now we have a motion and a second to approve this item also. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Onto the General Admin, Item 2B, that's our first one today, actions pertaining to on-airport, non-exclusive rental car concession agreements. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Council President, Council Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. Give you a high-level overview of the, the item before you, and you probably have read the, the report. There has been substantial amount of consolidation in rental car, certainly the airport rental car industry, over the last five years. It's down to three, basically, nationwide, that operate many, many brands at airports across the country. And we're fortunate to have all three at our airport. We actually, there were six of them at our airport, and they're all still there. They just operate as three parent companies instead of six separate companies today. So that said, we went ahead and negotiated with all three of them collectively and together for new contracts. And the way it works is that they pay rent to operate at the airport. They also pay us 10% of their gross revenues, which is industry standard. We also have built into the contracts a minimum annual guarantee, meaning if it's an off-year, if it's a downturn in the economy, we still get at least a minimum amount of revenue from them. And that number never goes down. So we were able to actually raise that minimum because business has been very brisk at our airport. And lastly, what this does is it, it opens up the opportunity for these entities to bring in additional brands to the airport, and that's exactly what's happening here. We had seven brands before, up the last five years. Starting with these new contracts, we'll have 10 brands operating at the airport between these three parent companies. So we feel that not only is it additional revenue to the airport, but the offerings to the public. Anytime you can offer more options for the public, that's a good thing for the community. So we're pretty excited about it. It's for the next five years, and of course, there's a five-year option beyond that, so. And I'm available for any questions.
Since the airport is in District 4, I'm going to go first to Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to congratulate you. This is becoming a habit, and I love it. You and your team have done such great work at the airport, and that facility, just going, looking at it and walking in it, it's, it's over the top. So keep up the good work, and I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Councilman Brand.
Hi, Kevin. Just a general question is, I'm assuming all the air traffic's been up the last couple of years, so is the volume on car rentals up, too?
Yes, actually commensurately. We've seen an increase by percentage in the rental car activity to the increase in traffic, which makes sense. But what also is unique about our airport, which we found out is a metric that's way above most airports across the country, is that we look at a number of transactions, rental car transactions per enplanements at an airport. You know, we have over 700,000 enplanements people getting on, and that's a metric that's looked at industry-wide. Our airport is very high, meaning not only do the travelers utilize rental cars, but people within the community will come to the airport, rent a car for their vacation or for a business trip, even if they're not flying. And that bolsters the, the business, the rental car activity at the airport.
So they're actually unrelated to airport. They're just want to rent a car, right?
Exactly.
And it's worked out well, and they relocated all those rental cars and companies, that one section there, just to the west of the terminal, right?
That's exactly right. The, what they call QTA, or Quick Turnaround Facility, that's the maintenance facility. It's working out very well. The fact that there's obviously no busing at our airport, great air quality benefit. They walk right out of baggage claim when they're there. And, and the beauty of these, this consolidation in these contracts is that they're able to expand their offerings with, within the existing facilities.
What are the three companies?
It's Hertz, Avis, Enterprise.
Okay. So, and you said nationally, that's the trending, and that those three dominate?
Those three companies represent 95% of the rental car industry at airports.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks.
Screen is clear. Actually, did I go out to the public on this one yet? All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, then. We have a motion. Do I have a sec, do I have a second to, we have a second, a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Kevin. All right. Let's see. I believe due to the items that have been polled, we can't, we can't begin our next item until 10:00.
That's correct, and the closed session is scheduled for 11:00 o'clock.
Okay.
We could do unscheduled.
I can do. Are there, so we'll do unscheduled communication at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to address counsel on any item at all? Now would be the great time. Yes, sir. Please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name's Larry Wilk. I live in Fresno, and I'm here to talk about the barking dogs that are annoying the heck out of me. There's supposed to be a quality of life in this town, and the code enforcement doesn't even pursue barking dogs. The police department doesn't pursue barking dogs. They send me to the BBB, who doesn't pursue barking dogs, who sent me to the SBCA, who don't pursue barking dogs. So I'd like to know from you guys who pursues the barking dogs, because there's a municipal code that says it's illegal to have a barking dog. I'm not, I'm tired of listening to barking dogs every damn day. They come in my house while I'm watching football, reading a book, or whatever. I'm supposed to listen to some fool's barking dog? I don't think so. So I want to know, who do I go to to stop these barking dogs? Or how to make code enforcement prioritize their, their problems? I don't want code enforcement going out chasing dead trees when I got to listen to a barking I guess that's it.
All right. Thank, thank you, Larry.
Council President, if I, if I could, I do believe Mr. Wilk is my constituent, right? And you, you talked to my office?
Capriolio.
Oh. Well, anyway.
He's the only one where I actually got, where I had to call him two times to stop these dogs from barking. He may, or somebody in his office may have spoke to those people, because the last few days at night, the dog was not barking.
I believe the council member went out there personally with a, some spray and a, and a stick, and, no.
I had to go there and drive in their driveway at 10:00 at night and lay on my horn for five minutes till the police show up. I've had to do that three different times. Two days ago, I bought a megaphone, so I don't have to drive around the block and park in their front yard and honk the horn. I'll just use my megaphone from my yard and annoy everybody until the problem gets solved.
Well, and, and thank you for your comments. We get a lot of barking dog complaints in my office as well, and because the city doesn't do anything anymore about the barking dogs, we send a letter to the, the person that has the, the barking dog from the council office. We send them a letter in the hopes that that works. But I mean, this is an issue for, for, maybe for us to, to go after as the economy comes back, as tax revenue comes back. It's in the municipal code, you can't have a barking dog. We get a lot of complaints. Maybe this is something we should look at in the future. We can address this problem. Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, Larry, I can't let you go again, but we, we heard what you said. I, I, we just had a really tough time with a barking dog just this last week, and I had a, I had a constituent in the north end of town that has your exact same problem right now. And the dog barks all night. The dog was trained to be a watchdog, and every motion of every leaf, or cat, or whatever, ends up barking all night. And so there's a lot of constituents that share your grief. So I think we're hearing what you're saying and our other constituents, and so maybe it is a good time to look into this situation. City manager, is it true, or city attorney, is it true that that is a policy on the books of the city of Fresno about barking dogs? Okay. So we have just, with suffering from the Great Recession, we have just not had the number of code enforcement people to tackle every situation in Fresno. So I think it is time to maybe revisit some of this. Councilman Baines.
It, it actually was a police, police issue. We used to enforce it, but we, on the police side, we don't do that anymore. There are a slew of reasons why, but I think, I don't necessarily know if we want to get into it out here right now, but, but there are, there are, it's, it's not an easy crime to enforce, but we can probably talk more about it offline, but maybe we should rethink the strategy.
Yeah, the council member's correct. It's, it's the issue of, of, it is a police issue, and it's an issue of resources and priorities. And when we're not even responding to burglaries, and we're telling folks to fill out a theft report online, barking dogs in the overall scheme of things, it's just not where we're allocating our officers right now.
And, and the main, and part of that, too, was it requires the, the officer cannot be the offending party, cannot be the party that's offended. It actually requires the victim to go through a whole process, the civil process, against, against the, the property owner. So it's, it's, it's involved, but it requires a lot of resources, and it's not quite cut and dry, so.
All right. Fantastic. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. I'm glad we were able to help the last few days. I know we've talked about this in the past, but I also want to let you know that the Code Committee is going to meet Friday at 1:00 here at City Hall, and that's definitely going to be one of the issues that we're going to try to address through the code enforcement and DORM personnel. So we're going to try to put a package together to where we can get this thing addressed and remedied. So it's on our radar. We're going to do the best we can with that, and I'm glad you came in today and focused us on it. Thank you.
Councilman Olivier. All right, then. Larry, thanks for your comments. It looks like you've got some councilmen that are listening, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Brunette Harris, and I'm with the heat for Southwest Fresno community. There was a meeting held in September, on September the 9th, at 5:30 at Edison, and Attorney Sloan, this is another situation to whereas we're getting different dates on all of these projects. At that particular time, Arnaldo Rodriguez, in which he's been with the city for 12 years, said that the projects that they're doing, the reason why they're doing it is because of 2009. You gave us 2002, he gave us 2009. So I don't know what particular lie the city wants to tell, but we got two different dates, and I heard that there was another one that was 2011. So as I spoke to you before, all of these projects and everything, these high-rises that the city are building, they're illegal. I mean, you're not giving me, giving us any answers on where you got these projects from. And like I said, the paperwork that I gave you so far as having to do with Cynthia recusing herself, there shouldn't be any projects, period. We had no representation, no member of the, of the city council came into our area, they have no input from the community. So I want to understand, where are you guys getting these projects from? And then also, our council member, we got an understanding that the reason he wasn't at the meeting because of the conflict. I don't understand how they're beginning to be a conflict of meetings that you have in your district that you can't attend, but you need to attend the meetings. And I don't understand that. And not only that, there was also the meeting that we read in the newspaper, one of the council members making the comment, so far as we didn't want that chemical plant in our area, what we need to pass. Whoever it was need to run his own district. You don't run District 3. And from the, from the looks of it, we don't have anybody running District 3. So I want to know where you guys are getting these projects from, and how you using this block grant money to do what you're doing, because it's illegal. And we're not going to stop until, if we have to get the federal government in on the city, we will do that. Because I'm trying to find out, once again, where are you getting these projects from? We've got three different dates, and like I said, Cynthia had to recuse where are you getting these projects from? We've got three different dates, and like I said, Cynthia had to recuse herself. Where are you getting the projects?
Thank you, ma'am. Any other members of the public like to address any item? All right.
Good morning, Council President Brandow, council members. My name is Claudia Casades. I work with Granville Homes, thirteen ninety-six West Herndon here in Fresno. Wanted to restate a couple, a couple of points that we've been making over the past several months in regards to the general plan. The general plan and EIR comments are due today. Today's the last day to turn in comments, and the development code update has not been released for a public review. And the comment we've been making over the last several months is that all three documents, the general plan update, the master EIR, and the development code should have been released together so that the public could have a chance to review all of the documents and how they interrelate with each other, and not piecemeal. The EIR states that all three are part of one project, yet we haven't been able to comment on the third part of the project because it has not been released. Therefore, our suggestion, our recommendation has always been to, once the development code is released, to extend the comment period on all three documents so that the public could have a chance to review them together and comment on them together. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Any other members of the public like to address any items for council today, or any item at all? All right then, we've, we cannot tackle our next item until ten AM, so councilman, we have a twenty-eight minute break, and we'll start again at ten AM. Our ten o'clock, we have two ten o'clock items, actually. The ten o'clock timed item under General Admin, ID fourteen dash four six two is the first item at ten o'clock, and that's a hearing to consider a rezone, oh, excuse me, to consider a resolution of public use in necessity for acquisition of permanent utility easements.
Council President?
Yes.
That item actually is continued to October twenty-third at eleven AM.
You?
It's, it's all the way at the bottom of the text.
So we only have one, we have the one ten o'clock item left. So, the ten o'clock item that we're actually hearing now is ID number fourteen dash four one six, a hearing to consider a rezone application and related environmental assessment. And that is from our Department of Resource and Management.
Good morning, Council President Brandow, Mike Sanchez, Development Resource Management staff.
Excuse me, Mike, just one second. Is it possible for, for us to wait for Sal? Wait for Councilmember Quintero to return? It's just because it's an important issue, and there are, I'd love him to be able to hear all the information. You want me to go get him?
Okay.
Thanks.
Mike, we're going to postpone for a few minutes until Councilman Quintero gets here. Bruce, did you have any luck with Sal? Okay. All right. We can, you have copies for all of us?
Yes.
We can take them? They won't be part of the official record? Okay. Okay. Yep, they just won't be inside the actual minutes of the meeting or the, the actual record, but we can definitely look at them. Mike, if you'll help us get back on track.
Sure.
I had just introduced the item, the ten o'clock item, the second item listed under ten o'clock, a hearing to consider a rezone application and related environmental assessments.
Yes, good morning, Council President Brandow, members of the council, Mike Sanchez, Development Resource Management staff. The matter before you is a continuing matter from June twenty-sixth of this, of this year and deals with the rezone application, R thirteen one four. Simply put, the rezone application is requesting a, a change of zoning from the existing RA Zone District to proposed R one. Approval of the R one Zone District would potentially allow for the development of three additional parcels on the subject property, which is located on the west side of winery between Washington and McKenzie Avenue. Here you can see the subject site outlined in red. As you can see, it's designated for medium density residential, which allows a density of up to ten units to the acre. Proposed development of this site with four potential lots is within those development parameters. Here you can see the surrounding zoning, the existing RA on the subject property, which is currently developed with a sing, a large single-family home. The surrounding properties are R one to the south, and you can see a host of R one B zoning to the immediate north and to the east. The properties to the immediate east are R one B and were developed under the county. Here you can see an aerial shot of the subject site. This is the area where we're proposing to have three additional lots to be developed on the subject property. Here is an initial outline of what these lots would look like. As you can see, the initial home that's there now will retain a lot size of approximately eighty-eight hundred square feet. The two interior lots would have an average of six thousand square feet, which is really more tradition, a standard lot size that we have throughout the city of Fresno. And of course, the corner lot would be a little bit larger with approximately seventy-two hundred square feet. Again, here is an aerial, and what this is showing is that the subject site is approximately twenty-eight thousand square feet, but a similar type of area in size, which is located directly across the street, south of McKenzie, currently has the same amount of units of, of, of four, of four single-family homes. What the allocan is proposing to do here is simply fit the same amount of homes into a parcel A, which I alluded to earlier, which would have an average of six thousand square foot for a minimum lot size. And again, here's, here's a overall view of the lotting pattern within the subject area. As you can see, many of the items in blue, which are in the city of Fresno, have your standard six thousand plus square, square foot lots. The areas in yellow, which are in the county, have your more large lot residential development of about nine thousand plus, and there are a few of those to the north of the subject site. Again, as indicated earlier, approval of the rezone would allow a future three-lot subdivision with the existing house to remain. The request is consistent with our plans and policies for infill development. The Planning Commission on May twenty-first did recommend approval of this project, and just so the council is aware, any alternatives that propose less than four total lots on the subject property would necessitate a general plan amendment. So with that said, staff would recommend the council move forward and adopt the environmental finding, prepare for this project, and approve the rezone requesting R one zoning for the subject site. Staff is available for any other comments you may have.
Thank you, Mike. We've heard this item once before. We're going to do this slightly different. We'll allow council members, Mike, to ask you a couple of questions first, to kind of get back on track from the project presented now as the first time we heard it, and then we will definitely go out to the public, and then we'll, we'll come back up and let council take a vote. Mike, can you get back to that screen where you were doing a comparison from across the street? The lot in question, right there, okay. My initial, when you showed this, initially, when it shows that you're, you're comparing these two pieces of property in almost equivalent size, and one of them has four houses on it, one of them currently has one house and an open lot, and you're saying that this is almost the same size, so we should fit four lots over here on Property A, like there's four lots, four houses on Property B. But when you take Property A and you take out that big top lot, then what's left, that open vacant lot, is not that comparable in size to any three of those other lots in Property B. And so, I mean, when you look overall, but Property A has a huge house on one end of it, and the remaining open lot is not comparable, in my opinion, to the other three. Am I looking at that incorrectly, or?
Uh, no, you're, well, no, let me just explain something. Here is what the proposed lotting pattern would be for the site. If you compare this diagram with the actual aerial photo, you have to remember the aerial photo is taken at an angle, so it's not giving you a true representation. That other slide that we showed you shows on the bottom the actual area in comparison. The air parcel, that parcel area in B has a total square footage of about twenty-eight thousand square feet. The parcel A, the subject property, has just slightly less than that. So if you take that into consideration, along with the proposed lotting pattern, you have to remember the existing lot will shrink in size. So that is going to have about eighty-eight hundred square feet. The two other lots will have at least a minimum depth of about a hundred and two feet, and at least fifty-eight to seventy-foot wide lots. So you are getting a comparable size, a single-family lot that you would get in any typical new subdivision.
Those ones across the street, if that's twenty-eight thousand square feet divided by four, are those seven thousand square foot lots, then?
That would be a comparable comparison, yes.
Okay, so what you, what you're asking is, so these lots across the street are basically sevens, and we would have three sixes over here in Property A.
You would have two sixes in Property A, because the, the two corner lots would be the largest, the, the one at the north end would be about eighty-eight hundred, the one on the south would be about seventy-two. So the two in the middle will be the smallest at about six thousand apiece.
Okay, all right. I just want to get your understanding of that. Councilman Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. First, let me start off by saying that I know Mr. Hamsey, and I know that, that he wouldn't bring a, a garbage project to the city. I know that, that he represents quality builders. I know he represents quality people, and, and they build things that improve areas, and, and they do a good job. So I, I wanted to say that first. Secondly, though, I mean, I, I have been in contact with my constituents who have been gracious enough to turn out this morning, once again. We don't believe that this project fits this neighborhood. As you're about to hear from Mr. Youngman, who, who made these maps, I mean, he can say it again, but I'll say it, this, this entire area on the end of each block, there are two homes, two homes, two homes, two homes, and this, this deal proposes to put three homes for a grand total of four. Not only that, but the city is requiring the builder to put a curb, a gutter, a sidewalk, a, a street light. So you have what used to be a county area, and you can see in the color photograph here, it's a county area, it's rural, and now, all of a sudden, in this, in this rural neighborhood, and you can understand, it, it obviously has its own character, as neighborhoods do. So this project, the city is requiring the builder to put in all this stuff, bells and whistles, and so you've got a rural area where all of a sudden, poof, here's sidewalks and everything, sidewalks that go to nowhere, streetlights that, you know, I mean, I join my constituents in their belief, and, and my neighbors in their belief, that this project, as it, as they're bringing it forward, does not fit this neighborhood. And I, it's going to be cattywampus if, if it goes in like this. So what, what I wanted, I have two questions. Can we do something in the interest of preserving the integrity of this neighborhood? And then number two, would it be economically practical to do so? Is there anything, Mr. City Manager and, and Mr. Sanchez, is there anything that we can do from up here to make this work? And I know that the neighbors don't want to see four houses on that end. Is there a compromise possible where if the city can help the builder make money on this and pencil out, we can do fewer houses, maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, get a lot filled in, and help the, the builder, welcome him to Fresno in a business-friendly way and help him make some money? I mean, is, is there a way that we can fix this? That's, that's my question.
Council Member Olivier, if the intent is to have less number of units on the site, we would certainly have to, one first thing we would have to do is change the plan designation for that, to allow lesser use, whether it be two total lots or three total lots. We'd say, we'd have to amend the plan because right now, the way it's situated, we could not make a consistency finding.
Explain consistency finding to me.
Currently, we have a single lot of record. If the owner of the property wishes to build upon that or parcel it up, he can do that. However, before we approve that map process, we have to make sure that it's consistent with the current plan of record. Right now, the current plan of record is medium density residential, which has a range of five to ten units to the acre. As proposed right now, he meets that intent. If he goes three lots total or less, you fall below that, that limitation, and you have to change the plan.
We were talking about the twenty, twenty, or the twenty twenty-five general plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was the point I was trying to make, is that to be consistent with the current.
That is correct.
This, this is current with the general, and I'm walking into this relatively new, but I want to point out that we're talking about lot sizes of more than six thousand square feet. We have new development occurring in the fringe area on lots that are at thirty-five hundred square feet, or four thousand square feet. So compared to what's being built in the new growth areas, these lots are almost twice as big as you would find anywhere else in, in our community.
Well, and I, and I know we have a great planning staff, and, and we really do. People who really know their stuff have gone to school for this kind of thing. I mean, is, is that what's taught? Is that universally acceptable to have an existing neighborhood that's rural, that's country, that's, that's established, and all of a sudden, you know, four or five brand-new homes with the sidewalks to nowhere and the, and the street lights and things like that? I mean, is, is that, to me, it's incongruent to the existing neighborhood. I mean, is, is that a thing in planning? Or is it just jam houses as many as we can in the name of density?
I don't think that's correct. I think what we do is we look at every case individually and, and measure it against what our current policies and procedures are. If there's a way to make that work, we certainly will work with the developer to make, to make it happen. So we certainly are about trying to provide some alternatives to the site, but right now, as the plans stand, the four lots would be a permitted use on that site.
Is it, is it possible, City Manager, to, to do some exemptions and to, to, to change it from the dais here so that we can make everyone equally happy or equally unhappy? I mean, is there a way that, that we can fix this by changing the, making exemptions to the, this, this general plan so that we can make this happen?
There's a couple of options that the council can consider. One is that they could initiate a general plan amendment to change the designation to a lower density classification. The other option was to give a direction to staff to perhaps include it as part of the GP update, general plan update that we're doing right now.
Sure. Well, if we did a general plan amendment from here to allow a lower density on this property, they still wouldn't be able to make money. Is, am I correct? It would be, it would be a loser with two houses or one house, correct? And I, I understand that, that you're out of patience, and you're out of time, and I, I do understand that. But if the city were able to re, also from up here, to remove some of these requirements that are costing you tens of thousands of dollars, could you make it work with two? Or could we do that right now, or does it have to come back?
It would have to come back. If you initiate a plan amendment, it would have to come back for consideration.
Well, if there's a way forward here, I would like to, to, to pursue that in the interest of getting them in and in the interest of preserving the integrity of the neighborhood. I think that there's probably a way forward here, and we could instruct staff to find it. But as the, as it, as it currently exists, it, it, it doesn't work for, for, for my neighbors and my constituents. So maybe, hopefully, when we hear from them, we hear from Mr. Hamsey, and we hear from other members of the council, maybe we can craft some kind of solution, because that's what I'm after here. I'm not after turning people away, or, and I'm not after ruining a neighborhood. So perhaps there's some kind of compromise. So perhaps there's some kind of compromise that we can find working together in this room right now, so that we can send home, send everyone home equally happy or equally dissatisfied. But we should do something today, because we just heard that time is of the essence. So I'll leave it to everyone else.
All right. The screen is clear, so we'll go out to the public on this item. So we're able to hear from everybody who wants to talk on this issue. You can just step up to the microphone and introduce yourself, and then you have three minutes to talk about this item. And so, would any member of the public like to address this issue, sir?
We're familiar with your system, but here's my card again. Okay? And, all right, thank you.
And if you have cards, did you like to turn in? You can just walk right up to this corner, even while this gentleman's talking, and hand them to Todd here, and he'll get them to me.
Thank you. I'm not really a very good speaker, because this isn't really what I do, but I got more passionate and involved in this as I did. And I see that, and that's why I printed everything that all of you have seen here, and tried to talk to as many people as I can, because we so believe in neighborhood uniformity. And as you can look at the map that I've got here, you can see that all of these lots are, all of these corners are two-lot houses, two-house corners. And it all fits the neighborhood, and as Mr. Olivier said, it's conducive with what the neighborhood wants. Now, yesterday and the day before, I went to most of your districts, and I drove around just because I had some time, and there's a lot of similar situations in your district also. And there are places where there's a big lot, and I didn't check to see if, how it's zoned, but it's an empty lot. One of them is next to Oliver Bayne's area, there's next to a church, and there's a big lot down there. But the house next to it is almost that size, house and lot. And I went to several of the districts and drove around, and yes, you're right, also, there are some, the new district, the new places that they're building up there, they're so small, you have to go outside and change your mind, and, or if you sneeze, the neighbor hands you Kleenex out their window. And that's what new construction is doing. And I don't know if it was Leo Wilson or one of the new builders is saying, hey, you can't buy big lots anymore, because the city doesn't want to sell them, so you need to buy two lots, if you're serious about wanting some space.
For the record, the city doesn't sell lots.
Okay, I didn't mean the city sells them, but whoever sells them to whoever buys them, they're advertising it on the radio that says things to the effect of lots are required to be, or are, I won't use the word required, because I don't know those rules, but lots are so small that oftentimes, they're suggesting that you buy two lots if you want any space, right next to each other, so they're selling, and the company that's doing the stuff on the golf course, and they're selling, you know. But anyway, which has nothing to do with this, except that those areas, when you buy into that, you knew that going into it. Here we have a neighborhood that is established, we're all happy here, and now, all of a sudden, we want to cram three or four houses right there in that little corner? We don't think they belong there. Uh, I'm for, I'm for new growth, I'm for expansion, I'm for, you know, I rent properties, I own stuff. I'm for businesses making money, because that's the American way. If you don't make any money, why are you here? So we want them to make some money, we want them to be consistent with what we have. As Mr. Olivier said, we think it's important that everything fit, that they make a few bucks, and one of the things on the planning, and I picked it up specifically, was their costs, the builders' costs, was the sidewalks and the streetlights and all those kind of things. There was already a streetlight right across the street, so you don't need a streetlight. They said they had to put some trees in for, okay, thank you, they had to put some trees in for 500 bucks apiece? Hell, I'll go to Home Depot and buy them some trees. I'll even dig the hole and plant them, so they don't have to buy four $500 trees. There's two grand right there in dumb stuff. So if you can get this by with a lot less and redraw it and recome back, that's what we would like to see.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to listen to me.
Next up is Rebecca Aguilier. Rebecca? All right, Rebecca.
Hello. My name's Rebecca, and I live in the question area. Oh, okay. And on that location there, across from that parcel, and my question is, why didn't everybody get a notice saying about this meeting? We're all concerned in that neighborhood. That's what it is. That's it?
That's it. All right, thank you, ma'am. Then we have Sarah Rojas, I think? Sarah, while he's passing those out, why don't you begin?
My name is Sarah Rojas. I live at, excuse me, 4909 East McKenzie. I have lived there since 1961. The Fresno B article dated July 3rd, 2014 discusses the 2035 general plan. Mayor Swearingen quoted as saying, "The 2035 general plan represents a balanced strategy that will preserve neighborhood character, property values, and promote investment in Fresno." This letter is to discuss the rezone R-13-014 filed by Mike Hamzy of Harbison International Incorporated, surrounding the area of North Winery, East Washington, and East McKenzie in the city of Fresno. Residents of this neighborhood are not in favor of amending the official zone map to reclassify the property from RA Single Family Residential Agricultural Zone to District to R1 Single Family Residential Zone District. We do not want, and I repeat, we do not want approval of a proposed residential subdivision of the subject property into three parcels in accordance with the tentative parcel map number 2013-3. We urge you not to allow three additional homes on this property, which in fact is 061 acres with an existing home already there. We agree with our mayor when she states that we must preserve neighborhood character, protect property values, and promote investment in Fresno. Three more homes on that lot will be tightly squeezed together with little room for parking. More cars will be parked on lawns and along the street. Ours is an old, beautiful neighborhood with large lots and large custom-built homes. Squeezing three small homes on that lot will impact our property values and destroy the character of our neighborhood. City leaders must listen to the residents on issues such as this and do the right thing. Please see the attached maps that will help you visualize a proposed division of the lot as we understand it. The 06 point lot will look nothing like the rest of the neighborhood. The division of that lot, to have four homes on it, will be unique to the neighborhood and will not look well due to its size. The investors are making this proposal merely to make money without considering the integrity of our neighborhood, since they will not live there.
Sarah, I'm going to have to stop you right there, because you're out of time, but you provided us this letter, which you're reading, and we can see that, and so I think we get your point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victor Parra, is Victor here?
Hello, my name is Victor Parra. I've been living there on 4881 East Washington for four years, going on five this December. And I see it don't look right to put four houses on one, on one block, because it don't, it don't look right. It just, it's like a country thing, that's why we moved out there, and like, it don't look to put four homes on one block, and it just, it's going to mess up the property values, I believe. And it don't look right, it just, it don't look to go ahead and put a streetlights, and if you want to like, that's like, go on the other side of the block, like to Larry, go put homes on that side, leave our side of the, our block just how it's the way it is. And if he doesn't want, if he wants to make money, why doesn't he just sell that property and let someone just build one home instead of three more? Because I was even looking into it, I would want, I would want to buy that property, make myself one nice home on there. So that's, I just wanted to go ahead and put out.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Victor. Ruben Silva?
Good afternoon. I bought my house in 2009 with a refund, okay? The street above us has what we call condensed homes, and as you can see, the street is wide, but all of a sudden, you get all these cars parked right there, all down the street. As soon as you get past Grant, it's all relieved, you know what I mean? My grandkids can ride their bike up and down the street there, not worry about cars, but you can't ride the bike on the other side of Grant because too many cars. Also, on that very corner, on Washington and Chestnut, it's been about three killings since I've been there. Two chop shops, I've been there since I've been there. And now you're talking about putting up a four-house complex on the other side of me, and where they're going to park their cars. Plus, when the man showed you the map there, that corner house, her house, has got a street there. It's dirt, it's a dirt, uh, north sidewalk, but the street goes out, how do you say, like a Y? One side is for walkers, the other side is for a right-hand turn, the other side is for a left-hand turn. So they didn't show the true map, they showed a, that her house is, goes way out there to match the other street, but it does not match. It's kind of short there. And plus, on the other side of her house, on the back side is one house property facing Washington. So then that also has a, what do you say, there's no sidewalk, but it's just all dirt right there, you know what I mean, a path? Again, like you were talking about, where you're going to put sidewalks? And so how big are those properties going to be? You're trying to cut down on police protection, now you're adding four houses, more cars, more people, and where are the people going to park? Would you like that in your neighborhood? Here you buy a nice house, and all of a sudden, your people are cramming into one small area. You hear you could walk your own kids to the park, and all of a sudden, you've got cars zooming in and out. My street has speed bumps for that reason. All the other streets don't have speed bumps. Why is that? Because we're the county, and we're also trying to protect our children. If you have speed bumps, you may not like them, but after a while, you're kind of glad you have, your children are being protected. That's what I'm talking about. You're putting three houses, four houses in one small lot, sidewalks, we don't need those.
Thank you, Ruben.
Sure.
Great job. Is Cindy Silva, Cindy?
I'm Cindy Silva. I live over on East Washington, and we use winery quite a bit. We don't feel that, we think that there would be too many houses. Right along that street on McKenzie is also a walkway, which many people use, families disabled and otherwise. In fact, I see three women in their walkers going around that corner almost every morning. Everybody takes those walks. The kids go to school, they have their, they go by bike and other means, walking otherwise. And the extra houses, I think, would congest that and wouldn't provide the walking that these people need. And I think that's, that walk area is very important, and the extra houses would affect that.
Thank you, Cindy. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item?
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Hamzy. I'm with Harbison International Inc. My family's been in this sound since 1942. I started my company back in 84, we just celebrated in March of this year, our third year in business. As a civil engineering land development company in Fresno, we do close to about 120 projects throughout the state. We have currently 30 projects in different cities, and I'm really discouraged to stand in front of you over here. After two years, we started working on this project in 2012, there was rules set to develop this project under general plan that allows for a longer, bigger density than what we're trying to develop. The city planning department had worked with us, and they said you have to have minimum of three lots plus a remainder. We did everything the planning department recommended, and the city asked for. You guys set the rules to do infill projects. We've been waiting for two years, we spent more than $20,000 in city fees, not to count engineering and other fees that we had paid. We did everything that was asked for us to do, to do the right thing for the city, and what do we, what do we have? We have lack of leadership on moving forward. We have done similar projects that we started in 2012 in other cities, smaller cities than the city of Fresno, they've already been built, and people are living in them. If this project doesn't move forward, my client will move toward trying to recoup his losses and look for legal action against the city of Fresno. I would recommend strongly, it will not affect my business one way or another, we have other projects in other cities, but I look, I grew up in Fresno, I love this city, this is my hometown, and we need to start making the right decision that affect the most of the people, not the many that showed up tonight or today. I appreciate your support, and I hope that you can move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other members? Yeah, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Masato Yasuda. I am one of the owners of the property. You can see, you know, you have, you know, vast dirtland, which only attracts crimes, litterings, and we got a call from city to clean up all the time. We are very fed up with it. So having said that, this is, you know, this occupying this land with houses is the best choice for the city, for the residents, for us. So inaction is, is very bad. So, you know, I hope, you know, even somebody else than us can do something with this land. That's, that's, that's better for everybody, and I frankly don't know why those residents, although I respect their opinions opposed to this idea. We are small business, you know, we, we invested about 80 homes in Fresno, purchased homes and rent out, we are proud of it, because we are business. We cannot do anything that doesn't make business sense. That's bottom line. And I understand there is an idea of three lots instead of four lots, in that, I mean, three parcels instead of four parcels, in this land... in this land, which doesn't work at this moment. At least until Fresno real estate market improves substantially from here. That might happen, but that not, might not happen for five years. Do you want to keep this land as is for that next five years? I don't think so. So, you know, I appreciate your support. We are, we are decent business and would like to make this town, you know, more clean and more affordable. And, and appreciate your consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dominga Bustamante. I live at forty-eight eighty-six East McKenzie, across the street from the said place. And that little red line you see on the map, I think it's a little distorted. But other than that, I'd like to say that when this gentleman bought this property, they knew the zoning was there. Now they're trying to rezonate for their own gain, not because of, they told us we moved, we moved the fence because of the people who live there, we wanted to make the fence closed, no, they had always planned to put those three houses in there. And we were here not too long ago and you voted against it. A few years back, there was voted against again. So now here we are again, now I just wondered why the city council keeps voting against it and we're having to come back. Isn't it when you vote against something, it stays voted against something? Or do they have the privilege of keeping, coming back and coming back until they overturn your minds or overturn whatever you're, what they want? And what they want is not possible in that area. They make it look really good on that map, but if you put four houses in those two lots, it's gonna be overcrowding, you're gonna have parking problems, you're gonna have all kinds of problems in that corner. You have to go there and look at it. Now if they would tell me they were gonna build those houses and come and live with them, I'd say go ahead and build them. But they're not. And they're gonna try and sell them and make their money back, fine. But what happens when they don't sell those houses? They're gonna have to rent them, they're gonna have more rentals in the area too. So at this point, I, I concur with all my neighbors, I do not feel that at this point you should allow them to build there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item? All right then, back up at council, Councilman Brand, you've punched up.
Thank you, Council President. Can I speak to Mike? Can you come up, Mike? The proposal to build three homes is, what are the projected size, you have the actual plans, the size of the homes?
The size of the homes will range between thirteen hundred to about two thousand square feet, similar to any lots we develop on any six thousand square foot lot throughout the city of Fresno, city of Clovis. The designation for this project for general plan, we're following the general plan, we're following the zoning that the city adopted. If the neighbors have not agreed to it, they should have showed up when the general plan was adopted and voted against it then, not after you guys adopted and asked us to proceed with it, spend the money and the time to develop the plans and move forward. Then you come back and say, no, we don't want it because the neighbors are against it. The horse is already out of the barn, you need, we need to address the issue that we have on the table right now. The lots are six thousand square feet, two of them, two other lots, one eight thousand three hundred, another one seven thousand one hundred, which is consistent with the general plan. And in actuality, if we follow the general plan to the teeth, we can put apartments in that area and we decided not to because of the neighborhood concern.
Okay, so.
So we are not pushing the weight of what the general plan allows, we're doing what's compatible for the neighbors across the street. They have seven thousand square foot lots with, with, with homes without any garages. We'll be planning to have two-car garages with a driveway where people can park off, offside the road. We'll do all the improvement that the city requested from sidewalk to trees to lighting. We will meet all the standards that city set, we play by the rules, whatever you guys set up the rules, we play with it. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. If we do less than three lots, it will not be cost effective for that area as a real estate investor to be able to sell those homes and recoup your costs of building homes at two hundred thousand dollars. It, it, the market will not generate that.
Have you actually drawn plans yet? Do you have actual plans for the homes?
We have conceptual plans for homes, but I don't have them with me right now.
So you said you ranged from thirteen hundred square feet up to two thousand square feet?
Up to two thousand.
So in other, I'm assuming that you have a two-story home?
That's if we go with two-story homes, yes.
That's yet to be decided, right?
That's correct, that will be based on the market, we'll do a market analysis, see what kind of price range and what kind of homes needed for that area and we will develop something that we're proud of whatever we do, we're proud of whatever we do, we develop. We've been doing this for thirty years.
Okay, and is the intention to resell the homes or rent the homes or?
To sell them, not, not for rent, you cannot go in and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to rent them to somebody that can come back and destroy them. The gentleman that spoke ahead of me earlier that owns apartment or, or homes in that area that is renting them, we are not, we do not rent properties and let them go down the drain. We usually build quality homes and we sell them to people that are gonna live in them and they're gonna invest, they're gonna go buy, get a loan and they're gonna have to work to pay for, for that house and they, and they'll be proud of ownership of that house and that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm looking at the exhibit C, these are the, they call the soft cost, these are the, some of the, the impact fees, the city fees. I didn't see school fees, school fees are considered paid on existing city manager? Okay, so even at, at three lots, this is a cost of sixty-three thousand a lot. And it, it, these are the soft cost, yeah. And the, if you build two lots, it would only be a thousand dollar savings, I can see the obvious cost economics. But I just ran some rough numbers on, with soft cost at roughly sixty-three thousand, that's assuming that three homes are built. And I just figured, say twelve, a twelve-hundred square foot home at hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, that's roughly a hundred and fifty-three thousand, you get finance costs, you're probably about two hundred and twenty thousand. That's, if you built a bigger house, it'd be probably two forty, two fifty. And I'm not really certain exactly what the resale value in that area is, but I would say probably below two hundred thousand. Now again, that's up to the investor to, to make that determination.
I will answer this question. Construction costs, we have our own construction company where we can keep the costs down. Finances, we have group investors that we brought from San Francisco to be able to invest in this area the same way as we invest in any redevelopment areas in DeNova or, or Sanger or any other redevelopment agency that they bring us in to help them out. So what we're trying to do, trying to bring quality homes at a affordable price that we can sell it at that market value and be able to take care of the blight that we have on that lot.
Thank you, Mike.
And do infill areas.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, this is not our decision to determine whether or not the property's marketable or will make a profit or not. I'm just wondering, I just ran the basic numbers, so it's gonna be a completed price of, I'm almost certain over two hundred thousand dollars, so. And there's a little bit of a misnomer because the existing homes are probably twenty-five, thirty years old, so you have a brand new home or fifty years old. And I talked to Mr. Youngman and I, I can see this is like, I, I saw this on the planning commission back in two thousand one through two thousand six, when we had this rapid growth in the city of Fresno along west of ninety-nine in the Sunnyside area where you'd have literally, like in Sunnyside, fifteen thousand square foot estate-sized lots and right next to it would be a, a new subdivision with six or seven thousand square foot lots. So we tried to blend in, of course, this was on a bigger, like a hundred-unit subdivision where the outer lots would maybe be ten thousand square feet and go smaller inside to blend it out. So I, I can see that issue. But really, this is the fundamental thing we're gonna be facing time and time again on, on this, our decisions with the, both the two thousand twenty-five and the two thousand thirty-five general plan are advocating for infill, this is infill, and they're advocating for higher density. And the state of California is putting mandates for, on our housing element that they would probably prefer to see a two-story apartment complex there, but to really achieve the densities that the state is asking. So we have a dilemma here, but if we really want to implement a general plan, we have to find a way to make, because nothing will ever work unless there's a market-driven business model. Because this gentleman is not gonna build something that he can't make a profit on. And I, I'm even thinking at three homes, it's, it's problematic. And the other issue really is, is just thinking this thing out and being here five years on the planning commission, six years on the council and seeing a lot of similar types of issues come up. And really now, I can come back ten years later and see, well, did I make the right decision here or there? It's not so much more, I think about it, whether it's two homes or three homes, it's gonna be the quality of the home. If they decide to build two cheap homes or three cheap homes, it's probably not gonna work in the best interest. If they build quality homes there, they can actually elevate the value around you by having the quality there. And if they're gonna be sold, not rentals, I mean, that would be my preference, that you're gonna have people that buy the home at a price that's probably much more expensive than the average home around the area, that they're gonna have a vested interest to keep the home in good condition and that, and make good neighbors. And I'm assuming there's two-car garages, because the problem with a lot of older neighborhoods is there's single-car garages or no garage at all. And it, you get a lot of car, and I, and people talk about that, a lot of traffic out there. So having a two-car garage, having a quality home, whether it's two or three, it's gonna be, that's gonna be the issue. Who, the type of quality, the amenities. And I don't see how we can be successful here to try to implement the general plan. And I certainly understand Mr. Youngman and all the residents what their concerns are too, but, you know, and I, and I believe looking at this fee schedule, that some of these fees I think are excessive. For example, there's a sewer and water fee of eight thousand nine hundred dollars. This is the existing area with water mains already there, so I don't know why we're, we're charging the same amount of money on an infill project. There should be incentives. Now that doesn't really answer the concerns of the neighbors, but it's something we have to look at here as a council. So this is a tough one for me. But I think in the end, when all the dust settles, if the right quality home is built, then you're gonna have a, a stable neighborhood. And the other thing, if nothing's done, you're gonna have a lot sitting there for the next, how many years, gathering weeds and so on, so. Yeah, I'll listen to my colleagues, but I, I can see that we have to find a way to implement our general plan, but do it in a way that's conducive to strong neighborhoods. And again, bringing single-family homes there, a quality built, would in my opinion improve your neighborhood. I'll listen to my colleagues, thank you.
Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. So I'll, I'll make, you know, my comments relatively short. I, I wanna acknowledge the fact that I completely see both sides of this issue. And the first time we were here, of course, I supported the, the, the neighborhood and the community. I believe there's value in, in a neighborhood and community trying to keep, keep the continuity in their, in their community, so I value that, and that hasn't changed. I, I think that this, you know, I, I join Councilmember Brandon, some of his comments, but I think definitely we as a council, as a body, as a city, this is the conundrum, dare I say, that we're gonna run into more times than not as we talk about infill projects. We, we are encouraging investors to do infill in communities and neighborhoods. But at the same time, we've gotta figure out a way to allow the communities and neighborhoods to receive that investment. And it's not always gonna be easy, there're gonna be some tough ones. And it gives us some food for thought as we contemplate the general plan and, and how we go forward. Because in this sense, the investor did everything they were supposed to do. And as a city, we have to have policies that can give certainty to our investor, investment community. These uncertain situations aren't great, and so I wanna acknowledge that. And this is not what, as policymakers, that, that, that we wanna have. We need to have policies that, when you read them and you follow all of the steps and you get to the end of the process, that you, you know that the project's gonna happen. Because it's, it's, it's a large investment of time and money. At the same time, we've gotta be able to protect communities and make sure that as we are setting up our policies, that the things that we're encouraging to happen in communities are not running contrary to what those communities want, which is what's happening here. So I, I, I understand the, the situation, it's really our problem up here and you guys are, are running head on into it. So I'm gonna, you know, really encourage my colleagues and no one's gonna like what my suggestion is because, because I'm gonna ask for a, a couple of more days or a couple more weeks because I think, I think there may be a way for this particular project, there may be a way out where we can allow our investors to make money. And I wanna say, I think investors should make money. I absolutely am totally supportive of that. Our communities don't thrive unless we have people that are willing to take a risk and do things to, to, to bring better amenities, things that I can't do and things that the communities can't do. So I wanna acknowledge that, we want your investment. This is an odd situation and I think, I think if we are all willing to compromise just a little bit, that the community, maybe just a little bit, investor, maybe just a little bit, there may be a way where we can fix this and it won't be perfect. You know, everybody might walk away feeling a little unhappy, but also a little satisfied as well. We wanna acknowledge the invest, the investors, we wanna also acknowledge the community and I think there may be a way to, to get there. So I've talked to, a little bit to Councilmember Olivier, whose district this lies in. I think that he certainly is open to trying to find a way where we can mend, you know, mend the gap here because we're real far apart right now. But I think there might be a way to get us closer. Won't be perfect, but closer. And so those are my remarks. I, I, I wanted to, you know, hopefully give the, illustrate the picture that we, we really are in with this project. We as a council totally understand both sides. The way that this conversation is framed now, there has to be a winner and a loser, unfortunately. This is a policy question that's unfair to both of you guys. So if you are open to allowing us a little time, we, we may be able to get closer. It won't be perfect, but we might be able to get a little bit closer. So, Council President, thanks for, you know, I'm gonna let the, the, I'm gonna let Councilmember Olivier make a motion to, to whatever, whatever he'd like to do, but thank you for indulging me and those are my remarks.
Councilman Jean.
Well, before I make my comment, is there a, a motion that, the council member? There's no motion, you wanted to vote? Well, you know, I mean, obviously, if, if the council member wants a couple of days or whatever the timeframe to continue this, I think it should be, it should be within a specific timeframe that it doesn't linger any longer than it, it should have to, so I'll support it. But I, I think at this particular point, I mean, we've, we've gone through several projects and the big one that I recall, us going through, you know, with the Alpesale and when that was done and, and the developers come through and then very close, we remember we had some pretty good dialogue up here with, with constituents as well. But at the end of the day, you know, the council will move forward. And so far, it's, it's been fairly good in terms of the response that we've had. And so, so I'll, I'll be supportive of the motion if that's what it's gonna ask to, to continue. But I think the motion should be, shouldn't be open and should have some specific timeframe as, as we get back to dealing with this issue. Because at this particular point, I'm kinda leaning with Member Brand's comment. Because, you know, we're, we're going through a pretty substantive twenty thirty-five plan now and this is a part of twenty twenty-five. And, you know, I think And, you know, I think we're going to have to make sure that our parties are clear in terms of the policies that we have, because if we keep coming back here, it becomes the NIMBY issue every single time. And, you know, then we're going to be hodgepodgeing every neighborhood and making amendments every single time, because we're going to have those differences in each neighborhood. So I'll be positive in terms of the motion, that's where it goes. But I just want to make, you know, our constituents and the council body knows that I think there's a larger issue, and Member Brandon has made some pretty, you know, convincing argument as to where the city, where some of the state requirements for us in terms of growth for every city here in the state. Okay? Thanks.
Councilman Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. When I, just in response to Councilmember Jean, when I wrote the Build Act, I learned a lot about infill. And infill is very, very expensive to do. That's why people build on the fringe and in the outlying areas, because it's cheaper to build out there with new land than it is to come in and do infill because of the amount of the fees. In this case, it's an interesting test of urban planning, because we have an established neighborhood that has a rural feel to it, and we've come in and annexed it. And then as a city, we've said, well, we're a city, we require curbs and sidewalks and gutters and streetlights and all kinds of bells and whistles. So, you know, no wonder the neighbors are here saying, you know, this is not something that we think would fit with our neighborhood, and so we don't want it. So I do see this coming back over and over again as the city makes its new priority, infill. We're going to have to handle these kinds of things, just like this, on a case-by-case basis, where residents are going to want to participate in the crafting of their neighborhood. I mean, look, I believe that, you know, if you own the land, you should be able to build, you know, whatever you want. And here you have a case where a builder has come in and he's followed the rules and he's followed the procedures, and it doesn't work for the neighbors that live there, who are concerned about the safety of their streets, the safety for pedestrians, and on and on. They have a number of concerns. Well, because they're my constituents, I'm going to back them to the end. So the solution today is, and I know that you've all seen, a lot of people walking around and talk to the city attorney and talk to the city manager and their staff standing out here now, that's because they're trying to find a way forward where the builder can get something on his land that will preserve the integrity and safety of your neighborhood. By that, we're talking about maybe a compromise that would lead to less houses on that street. So, exactly. So we're working on this. It could happen, but what I see is something that I haven't seen before, is the people that, and I'm sure it happens all the time, because we try to please people who come to our city, but really, the people at the highest echelons of the city, the attorney and the city manager and this council, really want to see something happen where both can be satisfied. So if, I mean, look, if the builder has done his homework in what he's supposed to have done, they dotted their i's and they crossed their t's. If the council wants to vote today to approve this project, the council has that right, because the staff is recommending it and the package is complete. Okay? So I will make a motion right now that we table this. How long, city manager? Because this is going to be something that the city manager's going to have, that he's going to be working on with you. And so, two weeks, I would say, we'll make a motion for two weeks and see if there can be some kind of compromise reached. And if it comes back and there's a compromise, and by waiving fees and helping these guys get into an existing neighborhood and do infill, which is what the city's really all about these days, well, then that's fantastic, then we'll be able to get them in. But if it comes back in its current form, I won't be able to support it, because I'm going to be supporting the neighbors. So I guess the motion is to table this for two weeks for Doug Sloan and Bruce Rudd to work on this and try and figure some kind of compromise. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Oliver.
This will have to be a time certain, so is there a particular time you want it for? Same time?
10 o'clock AM, again? Is that okay for everyone?
Can we make it the 30th?
City manager's asking for the 30th.
What day is that, Yvonne? On the 23rd, we have an 11 o'clock item that I know.
The 30th. The 30th. If we could get the 30th.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
That's my motion.
30th at 10:00 AM?
Yeah, that's available.
That looks, okay, good. All right, so we have a motion to table this item till the 30th at 10:00 AM, and we have a second. But I also have other council members who've punched up. I'm going to allow them to make comments, and then we can return to that motion. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. It's unfortunate that we've gone this long to get to this point, but I think this is the perfect illustration and the perfect test case for the vision of 2025 slash 2035, but we have to temper that with reality. And today's hearing is that reality. So we need to use this as a test case. We need to see how this works out, because this is going to come back, I agree with my colleagues, over and over and over. So to me, it's, again, it's a vision of the 2035 plan, 2025 plan, but now we have a touch of reality and tempered this by reality. So now we have to come forward and reach an agreement on this, because it's not going to, it's not going to go away. So I support the continuance. If I can participate or help in any way to reach a compromise, let me know. It's unfortunate we had to go this long before we've reached this particular moment. So I think it's, again, a perfect test case, and I wish good luck to both sides of this issue.
Councilman Brand.
Just want to make it clear that I really, we talked about compromise, and the more I thought about it, really, the three homes is a compromise based on what's actually there for zoning. And if I'm correct, you go six to eight units? So, and I understand where the neighbors are coming in, but really, three homes is a compromise. And realistically, this will not make any sense at all from a purely financial point of view at two homes. It only works, and I think it barely works at three homes, probably if I was doing it, I'd want four homes, but, of course, I mean, new additional homes, but I believe that this is a compromise at three lots. And I think we need to be honest with everybody here as we come back. I don't think the developer can work with two homes. This doesn't make any sense. So it's either going to be nothing, a vacant lot, or probably three homes. And again, the answer's going to lie in how they design these houses, how they're built, the people that come in and buy these homes, that's where the solution's at. If it's done right, in my opinion, it'll enhance the neighborhood. But I don't think we can continually, and I'm okay with the two weeks, but we can't just keep pushing, 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 because we've talked about, for six years, about being business-friendly and about infill, and we have an opportunity. And I understand trying to find the right solution, but we've got to send a message out too, that it's got to be done right and consistent with our own policies. So, again, where I stand right now, I think we need to move forward in this deal. If there's, is there some way that they can find a compromise, I'm all for it, but I think in the end, they've already made the compromise. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero.
Mike and the residents, you know, it, personally, I don't, I'm really surprised that it's taken two and a half years. I think you've mentioned it, to try and get something to work, that it's taken this long. And I don't know if it's, you know, the city that's dragged its feet or who has, you know, but, I mean, for a project like that, it's just, it just shouldn't have taken that long. Mr. Youngman, how many, how many years has that property been vacant? Do you know? Do you know, Sarah? Yes? How many years ago was that? Okay. So it's been, it's been a vacant piece of property for quite a few years?
Ten plus.
And you've probably had folks go by there, dump trash, and all those other things? That's kind of the start of where the McKenzie Trail is, right? By there? It's by there? You get walkers going through there? Okay. I know. Yes. But regardless, I know it's been vacant for many, many years. It's a wide street, you know, and, okay. Yes, I know. And Mike, besides meeting with the planning department on trying to work something out, have you also met with the, with the folks in the neighborhood?
We did meet with the folks, the folks with the neighborhood. We sent notices to all the neighbors, the same group of people that showed up here. We met with them twice before, and we tried to come up to a solution. Originally, we were planning to put apartments on this property, and since we talked to them, we've tried to find the best solution. We were just discussing during this meeting right now, that maybe if the city waives the fees, we might be able to put two lots. I don't know if it'll be cost-effective to be able to do that, because you're not going to go in and build lots and put money out of pocket and lose money on any projects. No businessman will do that. And we're not in the business of charity. We're in the business of helping develop the city and still make some costs to pay for our employees.
So you're representing the developer? You've met with residents maybe two or three times?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
Okay.
We did our best to put a quality project, and we can, we'd be very happy to table this project and see. The process is, if you're going to change your general plan amendment, it takes time. I don't know if we can come up with a solution to allow for two lots, waive some fees, make it cost-effective to be able to develop it, but it'll give us two weeks to study that and see if there is a solution, if it makes any sense. And if the developer's willing to do that, we'll go with two houses. But if it doesn't make economical sense, then there's no sense to develop on this property and can be sitting empty for the next 20 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mike, you got any ideas? New ideas?
Let me, let me kind of, we, there's a motion on the floor to give staff, we'll go back and take another look at this, but the reality, the reason that we're dealing with this reality, and this is a 2025 general plan, this is the current general plan, is because the market demand has reached a point where the developers looked at it, the property owners looked at it and says, there's enough demand out there for me to build three homes or two homes or whatever it is, and based on my land costs, construction costs, and my, your investors' return on investment, and the price point that can be derived from that area, all those variables are now coming together. And whether it's somebody who's looking to build on a 6,000 or 7,000 or 8,000 square-foot lot, or a developer who comes in here and wants an eight-foot driveway because they're trying to build on a 3,500 square foot, it all is being driven by those costs. We can talk about densities, we can talk about general plans, we can talk about reality. The reality is, is that based on probably what's going on out in the new growth areas, where someone is going to pay $250,000, $300,000 for a house 1,800 square foot with a postage stamp of a yard, 3,500, 4,000 square foot lot, and from an infill strategy, a 6,000, 7,000 square foot lot will probably be very attractive to a new home buyer compared to what they would get in a new growth area, which is just exactly what we're trying to instill, what we're trying to instill in our current general plan, as well as what we're trying to achieve in our proposed general plan. So these dynamics isn't because it's taken so long to get here because of the general plan, it's being driven by market forces, demands come up, and your costs to construct are X, and the developer or the investors believe there's an opportunity right now based on what the neighborhood can, from the price point the neighborhood can drive, there's an ability to sell a product. So give us three weeks to come back with something, but, you know, it is counterintuitive to start talking about waiving fees in order to actually reduce the density. So we'll look at it, there may be some opportunities there, but again, let's not lose sight that a lot of this isn't being driven by general plans, it's just by the current economic times and the ability to build three homes at a price point that that market in that area will demand.
And Mike, one last question. How many years has your client owned the property?
My client bought the property three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Looking at the property and the general plan and the zoning and doing analysis to see for an infill property, they came into this town about five years ago, and they start doing infill projects, and we've been working with them in Fresno and in other cities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Olivier.
Thank you. Mrs. Rojas, did you want to say something? There's, there's no guarantee that they could sell them or keep them or to rent them or whatever they want to do with them. I mean, they own the land, they're going to own the property. We can't say that you have to rent it or you cannot rent it. We can't put those kinds of restrictions on them. So we'll have to see three more weeks. So if they can't come back with something different, then I will, I will continue to solicit no votes from my constituents, I mean, from my colleagues on the council, so to try and stick up for your neighborhood. But if, I don't know, we'll just have to see what happens.
All right. I guess then we've got a motion to table and a second to table, and seeing, hearing from the other comments, it seems like that's what's going to happen today. It's, I apologize to both sides for coming out today to table something for three more weeks. In my opinion, almost all of this stuff could have been and should have been discussed prior to today. And so it looks to me like we'll probably be doing this again in three weeks. I have, I don't have a lot of hope that we're going to be able to reconcile these two ideas. I think both sides have valid points. To the builders, you know, you've done your due diligence and you've been following the plan, and I give you props for that. Seems like you've been working within the framework of the 2025 plan, which is what this body has voted on. And then also to the community, the neighbors, I really understand your points too, because it is, it's difficult to go into an established neighborhood and try and make things look different. To the citizens that are already there, they had bought and purchased homes with an understanding of what the neighborhood was going to look like. And so to change that up on you, I understand your concerns too. And so I guess that we will entertain this motion and the second. I would, for myself personally, Mike Sanchez, I was going to ask if, prior to this vote next, or prior to this coming up on the 30th, can you set up a time with me? I'd like to be briefed individually, so I kind of know what's coming up on that. And then Clint, I would, you know, the part about sidewalks and streetlights, and where are you at on that? Would you like to see that, you don't want sidewalks and streetlights in that neighborhood?
It's not what I want. It's what the law is requiring them to put those things in at great cost, and it's also doesn't go with the existing neighborhood. It's a country neighborhood, it's a rural country neighborhood.
By country, you mean like Farmersville? What do you mean?
No, I think what he means is that the city annexed a number of these properties back in the day with no thought about how do you provide all the essential basic infrastructure such as sidewalks and streetlights. We've had situations where we've annexed neighborhoods in with no water or sewer, and then we end up having to put that in later on. So as part of our general plan discussions as we go forward, we also need to consider that a lot of times the county agreed to those annexations, because they realized they didn't have the ability to provide those basic services. Sidewalks, there's a requirement under the Americans with Disabilities Act, so you have to have access. The counter to that is, is these are sidewalks that are not going to be connected to any other sidewalk. So those are some things that we can look at over the next two to three weeks, which I think will be helpful as this body moves forward to deal with similar situations in the future.
I agree, and I do appreciate that. But in answer, in answer to your question, Council President, you know what, I also represent Old Fig Garden, the city part of Old Fig Garden, and there's not a sidewalk to be had there, and it
And it would, there's a developer that's putting in a house on Fedora and Washawn right now. And I don't believe that he is being, you know who it is, I don't know, Terrence Frazier, I don't think he has to put a sidewalk in front of that house. Because the people in Old Fig wouldn't stand for that, and the people here absolutely are the same, wouldn't stand for something like that. So I do hope that we can find an answer to the sidewalks to nowhere if, and even an ongoing policy. I understand that there's an ADA, but if you've got, if we've got all these county areas that have been annexed in over the past decades, and all of a sudden we're having them put in these goofy things, that needs to be addressed. And I'm looking forward to city manager and staff addressing it in this situation as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I understand that. One thing that you're comparing is, and Bob, I think, unless somebody calls you up, I think we're done with your comments.
I was just going to ask each of you to drive the neighborhood in the next three weeks.
Okay.
Go look at them. Personally, physically, go drive the neighborhood.
Right on. So comparing a neighborhood that got annexed by the city, that's now, you know, a city neighborhood, is still different than a county island, which District Two is full of. But I remember just last year, we, and it started many years ago, we began the process of putting in sidewalks in Pinedale. And then now that the citizens see the benefits of sidewalk streetlights, Pinedale can't wait until the whole community has some sidewalk. And there's just a few spots left, so I, yeah. Well, can we have your extra streetlights too? Beautiful. Right. Okay. Because out in District Two, we appreciate our streetlights. So my final comment is that, is, and I really echo what Councilman Capriolio talked about a minute ago. For me, this is a very tough issue. Like I said, I see both sides. And we're coming up on to the 2035 general plan. And we have to be very cognizant of the decisions that we make in the month of November, December, whenever it is, and how these type of problems are a result of our decisions. So all I can say is I hope that council gets to witness, this is what happens. You know, this is the reality of adopting a plan. And then you have developers who have the right to go out and work within the framework of that plan. But then you have the citizens and neighborhoods who've got concerns of your plan, you know, the new plan compared to what their expectations were when they bought in that neighborhood. So it's very important. So it's very, so I would just say, we're getting a little glimpse today of what the future's going to be like. So we have to be very cognizant about what we do with our 2035 general plan. Okay, we have a clear screen, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments before we vote? All in favor of tabling this item until the 30th at 10:00 a.m., say aye. Aye. All opposed? That motion passes 7-0. So to both the developer and also to the neighbors, we'll see you on the 30th at 10:00 a.m. as well. Thank you.
And thank you for coming, and I apologize for the last delay. But thank you so much for taking time.
Can I ask a totally unrelated question? Totally unrelated. On Clovis Avenue, there on, down by Tulare, there's eight zillion acres that they were going to build a shopping center. What's happening?
I think he's getting ready to, it's Banjo Creek. I think he's getting prepared to get grading permits. He's preparing to get grading permits. That project is moving forward.
It is moving forward.
Absolutely.
And massive.
It comes back.
But they built the one up on Erdin, and that was a surprise to half the town anyway.
Yeah, this one's not a surprise.
It started with signage five years ago. Just saying.
It's all being driven by the market.
By?
The market.
Okay.
He has to have anchor tenants to move forward with development.
It looks to me, and, what's that? City clerk, it looks to me like, is the 1045 item the next thing that we can, all right. 1045 item is a joint meeting of the City of Fresno, the Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency, the City of Fresno, and the Fresno Revitalization Corporation, ID 14-451. So Councilman Baines, shall I turn this over to you as the Redevelopment Agency?
I'll take it. Thank you. We have one item to discuss today, number 451, where we have actions pertaining to public improvements within the Central City Commercial Redevelopment Project. Madam Executive Director?
Thank you. This item fulfills an obligation for public improvements on Hammond, Effie, and Hedges. Central Valley Asphalt was the lowest of the six bids submitted. And funding for this will be, or has been approved in the ROPS, the period that we're in. So if you have any questions, I can answer.
All right. Thank you. I'll take this item out to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Or there, I can't, no council member?
Clear.
The screen is clear. I'll entertain a motion for this item.
So move.
It's been properly moved, the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Item passes. Unopposed.
That it then? All right. Cool. Thank you. Now we are on to closed session, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the last item.